Nine o'clock.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this meeting of the Otero County Commission on Thursday, November 10th, 2022. I'd like to call this meeting to order and have a roll call, please. Here?
Here.
Here.
All right, if you'll all rise for the invocation, please. And I didn't write this, but in honor of Veterans Day, I thought it was very appropriate. Dear Lord, we know that freedom isn't free and a special few pay the price for many. We owe a debt of gratitude to all the courageous men and women who have served and sacrificed to protect us and our freedoms. Today, as we remember our veterans, we ask you to bless each one and meet their every need. We pray they will know how valued, respected, and appreciated they are. Please bless their families for their many sacrifices as well. We ask for your protection over all who are serving now and ask you to bring them home safely. We also ask you to comfort all who are missing someone who served. In Jesus's name we ask these things. Amen.
Will you bow me in a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico as the symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Okay, before we get started with the regular meeting, we're going to do a proclamation for Veterans Day. Whereas in 1954, President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed the first Veterans Day proclamation calling on our nation to pay appropriate homage to the veterans of all its wars who have contributed so much to the preservation of this nation. And whereas because the commemoration of Veterans Day was a matter of historic and patriotic significance, on September 20th, 1975, President Gerald Ford signed Public Law 94-97, which returned the annual observance of Veterans Day to its original date of November 11th. Veterans Day continues to be observed on November 11th regardless of what day of the week on which it falls. And whereas on Veterans Day, we honor our nation's veterans who have given so much to protect our freedoms and the freedom of others around the globe, they represent the highest ideals of our country. While we can never fully repay the debt we owe these heroes, we will honor their service and provide them the care and support they deserve. And whereas so many of our veterans carry the scars from their service, both visible and invisible, and it is our nation's responsibility to help them heal. And whereas we are here to honor our Otero County veterans, past and present, we must also pay homage to their families who bore untold burdens, yet remain strong in the spirit and continue to inspire us all. And whereas hereby proclaim and call upon all residents of Otero County in remembrance of the veterans who fought to safeguard our heritage and freedom and to celebrate and proudly display the flag of the United States of America. Now therefore, with the Board of County Commissioners of Otero County, New Mexico, do hereby urge all citizens to recognize and participate in the observance of Veterans Day proclaimed during the regular meeting of the Board of Otero County Commissioners this 10th day of November 2022. I'd like to present this to we have some of our veterans. Would you all please stand up? And Dale, would you come up and I'll give you this proclamation?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I got it.
Let's go.
Is anybody else in here, veterans?
Yes.
Stephanie, if you want to squeeze, 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 squeeze.
A little bit more, Stephanie, just a tiny bit.
A little bit more, okay. There we go.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Give the guy a kiss.
Maybe you could teach him how.
Too old for that.
Yeah, me too.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. They deserve it.
Yes, it was. Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, now I'm gonna make a motion to approve our agenda. Do I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 All right, we'll start off with our sheriff's report.
Good morning. David Black, Otero County Sheriff.
Good morning.
For October, we responded to 2,950 calls for service. That's, in the four years I've been there, that's the highest monthly total we've ever had. We generated 255 investigative reports, issued 180 traffic citations, conducted 63 traffic crash investigations, resulting in 68 arrests. I was hoping to have some numbers for you. I know we've got an issue up on Highway 82. We've had a lot of crashes in the past three weeks. Looking at trying to determine some of the factors in the crashes. I mean, is it speed? Is it looking at your phone? What is it? I could not get that information gathered in time for this meeting, so, but I will get that to you and get a presentation. And we have stepped up our enforcement on Highway 82. Narcotics, I'm gonna include September and October since we kinda, we had a snafu in September numbers. We had one search warrant, one arrest, 14 case reports, two vehicles seized, three firearms seized. We had two checkpoint cases. We seized 218 grams of meth, 330 pounds of marijuana, 26.5 grams of cocaine, and we seized 354 fentanyl pills. Total of $274,000 worth of illegal narcotics seized. In our special events, Community Relations Department, we participated in several events to include the National Night Out in conjunction with the Holloway Air Force Base, attended a fire safety event in Cloudcroft, read Ribbon Week at Chaparral Elementary, attended a community luncheon in Cloudcroft. We also attended several trunk-or-treat events to include the trunk-or-treat Help New Mexico in La Luz and also the trunk-or-treat at the Elks Lodge. We also participated in the Drug Prevention Day at Yucca Heights Elementary in Chaparral. Last but not least, we did hold two dare graduations, one with the elementary school in Chaparral and one at the La Luz Elementary. Training for the month of October consisted, we hosted an instructor development class. We had people from multiple agencies, including ours. This class is basically to instruct people on, get their certification for instructor so that they can help instruct, you know, many different fields. And we, I use them a lot. We have a lot of instructors in our agency now, so. And we've also completed our firearms qualifications to ensure that all deputies have met their annual requirements for this year. Inner Manning, Deputy Benjamin Clark, he's continuing his 16-week stint at the New Mexico Law Enforcement Academy. He's doing very well with his training. I'll be going up Monday and attend his graduation on Tuesday of next week. Deputy Kirkwood, he was extended in his field training for two weeks. Just allow us, work on just a couple of things so that he'll be ready for solo patrol. Deputy Andres Perez has completed his. He is been assigned to the Chaparral District and he is doing very well down there. On October 31st, I hired as deputies Greg Louder, Joaquin Perez, and Randy Aguirre. They started with us on that day. They are currently attending our pre-academy training, being taught by our instructors within the SO. They are being prepped to attend the Law Enforcement Academy starting the 26th of January in 2023. Marnie Singer will be starting with us soon as a Hightower Secretary. Hopefully about the 21st of November, we'll have her onboard. Matthew Madrid was offered a deputy's position. He's currently employed with Grant County Sheriff's Office, and he's wanting to relocate back to Alamogordo where he's originally from. So I hope to have him onboard by the end of the month. I did have one deputy resign this month. He decided he wanted to go to work for New Mexico State Police. And I do have three people in line right now to fill that position. I say I was fully staffed for five days. Now I got one deputy position open, but again, we got three that we're looking at right now to get that position filled. And hopefully by the end of the month, we'll have that done. So as it stands right now, I've got that one deputy position open and I got one part-time dispatch position open. On our vehicles, we got the six vehicles that they're being outfitted right now. We're getting closer on that. We're having some issues with delivery of radios for the units. But we had a meeting with the BK rep the other day and he assured me he's going to find six radios real quick, so. With the capital outlay money received from the legislators, with approval of the commission, thank you very much for that. I have ordered an additional 10 Tahos and we hope to take, get them delivered in the middle of December. And that's it. Stand for questions.
Where do you don't mind? Rose Street.
I have submitted everything, photographs, ordinance, the easements, submitted that to RB the other day. We've been kinda talking about that. We're looking at the best route to move forward, which I guess it's probably to start with, with a letter notifying the property owner they need to get it cleaned up. So that is in the works.
As of right now, you drive down there, the weeds are so full that they're almost totally engulfed those side by sides that are sticking out in the road, so it could be a hazard.
Yeah.
I drove through there the other day and they were, the, somebody was out surveying that street, so I don't know. It wasn't one of the local surveyors. It was one of like the mapping deal for the GPS stuff. So the gentleman that owns the house, while I drove by, came out and was going down to talk to them, so I don't know what's going on there. The other deal, Sheriff Black, I was gonna ask you if there was any way we could do some additional patrolling inside of Chaparral. At the meeting Monday night, I had several complaints about the speeding and then of course the last accident, two accidents this weekend. I didn't know if we could maybe send out a few tickets, slow them down a little bit, you know, just kind of look at that a little.
And here's what I've done to address that. We have the Stone Garden money. We have, we normally work Highway 54 and then the Mesa area, you know, to assist Border Patrol in their efforts and stuff down there. We were able to speak with our Stone Garden partners and stuff in reference to, you know, the stash houses and all this stuff that we've come across in the Chaparral area. We were allowed to include Chaparral in that overtime budget. So yeah, you will see quite a few deputies on overtime and they'll be in the Chaparral area.
Did you get a chance to do that research, how many accidents and stuff like that on Angelina? Or is it still in the works?
I had that assigned to somebody to do. They are at home, very, very sick right now. They've been gone for three days. So I know I do not have it, but I will have it to you soon. I'm very curious to also see about that. That intersection in Chaparral and then I've got them pulling all the reports for 82, something we can start working on those areas.
How is that fentanyl coming in? Is it like pill form still?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, it's all, most of them are little blue pills, but we haven't seen them here yet. But you've seen the one that looks like a Sweet Tart or something like that. It's just a matter of time. They're gonna be here. Morning, how are you?
I just had a question. With the weather getting colder, is there a rise in homelessness in the area?
We're not seeing any, anything like that right now.
Or sexual assault from it?
No, ma'am.
Yeah, because we've had some in Tularosa. Lady was living in the post office, sleeping in there, and she got raped. So just wondering if there was any confirmation throughout the county.
I have not seen any, we have not received any reports like that just yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners. Matt Clark, Merzey Services Director. Volunteers responded to 217 calls for the month of October. Eight of them were fires, three structured fires, 177 EMS calls. Our codes office opened 27 new code cases, closed out 14. We did have an illegal burn. Did two fire inspections. One of them was on a cannabis facility up in Sacramento weed area. The slash pit is closed. We had a total count of about 760 loads from the first weekend in April to the last weekend in October. We've done two cleanups in the Tularosa area for the month.
Why is the slash pit closed?
We normally close at the end of October because the weather starts changing and most of people stop, the non-residents stop coming up as often.
Did you get a chance to drive by that property that I talked to you about Monday night?
Which?
The one south of town, right on the other side of the subdivision, metal lens?
I did not. I take that back, I did. That one, we suspect that that one is going to be an outdoor grow from looking at it.
But you haven't had any kind of permit turned in or any?
Outdoor grows, there isn't any permitting. But he's got, the way he has the fence up with it so you can't see into it, we suspect that that's an outdoor grow.
That's all I have.
I thought we had a good meeting last night.
It was a good meeting. It was.
Yep. Hopefully we can get some more volunteers.
We're hopeful. I'm getting out as much as we can to try and recruit.
Okay, all right. That's all I got. Anything else?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Porter, Otero County Road Department. So last month, we had one snowstorm to take care of. We had the pre-con for Appler, low water crossing, delivered the voting machines, sign maintenance, flood control and management on a lot of roads. Some of the ones that we had to do a lot of work on was Russia Canyon, Mauma, Chimney, Cornucopia, New Tank, Laberceda Canyon, and Waterfall. We also spent about two weeks down in Walker and Bell Canyon, doing some rebuilding from all the flooding down in there. Mowing continued, probably the last mowing cycle for the year on Riada, Three Rivers Road, Benton, No Gal area. And we did another patching blitz, La Luz and Laberceda Canyon, 16 Springs, and down in Chaparral.
How much snow did we get up there?
Just enough to send assault trucks out.
Yeah, that's all I got at my house.
Yeah, just enough to send assault trucks out.
You have anything?
Any updates on the 506? Is it still in?
I have nothing. I know we've got a batch of paperwork they're wanting from us now. I'm waiting until next week when Mary gets back from working with the voting to pull the dailies from one of the other district gentlemen so that we can compare the 506 east of the military versus where they are so we can compare maintenance.
I haven't had any calls, so I was just presuming it was still in good shape and...
We were down there two weeks ago and Juno did his regular routine maintenance through it.
Okay.
I still like that. Anything? Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Tom.
How are you, Tom? Sorry. Still had Matt on the brain.
Good morning, Commissioners. Trent Parker, Project Manager.
Hi, Trent. I'll try not to call you Matt.
The Detention Center, the progress the last month, the booking renovation, they completed the flooring, padded up ceilings, and conducted their final clean this week. Same for the medical renovation. Yesterday, we had the electrical and plumbing engineers on site to do a final punch list and final, final punch observation. And then today, I'm scheduled to go out with the architects and the structural engineers to do a final. And so after today, we should be substantially complete with that project. The contractor will have 30 days to complete all punch items and then we'll have that one closed out finally.
Hallelujah.
Oh, yeah. It's gonna be a celebration. CHENS Phase 3, we did receive the DFA approval and the funding was released. So as soon as we get those signed approvals, we'll be able to go out for bid for the third phase of CHENS and get that project going. The EOC, we got the internet installed this month in agreement signed with the fire alarm monitoring. And they completed all their MEP throughout the building and pending the above-ceiling inspections. We started the, climatizing the building for laying down the LVT flooring. And so that one's gonna be pretty much complete. We're waiting on some electrical components that were supposed to be here this month. We just found out yesterday they won't be here until December now. The air unit for the training room is the same way. It'll be delivered in December. And so we have all the access controls and cameras and audio and video equipment scheduled for the first of the year to be installed and then that project will be complete. The PSAP dispatch, we've got signed contracts with them and I should be receiving the bond information from the contractor today so that we can issue a notice to proceed. And we're looking at, the date for the notice to proceed will be November 28th. We're gonna wait till after the holiday to start their time on that. The project will be, is scheduled to be a two-phase project with a total of 540 days and we're excited about getting that one going. And I think that's about it.
I'm good. I'm just glad the jail situation's over. That's been a long drug out.
Oh, yeah.
Party.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Trent.
You don't look like Carolyn.
No. Good morning, Commissioners. Nina Sisler, Deputy Director of Otero County Detention Center. So basically, I'm just gonna go over at our count as today. We have 89 in-house. We have 11 at Hudson County, and they're not taking anymore because they're short-staffed. Otero Prison, we have 24. We're trying to get some more housed over there, but I know Sabola County has transferred a lot of inmates to Otero Prison. We have nine at Lincoln, 23 at Donna Anna County. We have six for diagnostic at the Department of Corrections and one CJ hole for safekeeping. So a total count today is 162. We have three juveniles housed at Donna Anna County right now with very serious charges. So they're gonna be there for a while, I believe. In facility, I know the sheriff's office has been assisting greatly with transport, unfortunately. November 30th, our last transport officer will be retiring. So in facility courts, we are busy inside the facility because we do a lot of Google meets court still. 37 for municipal for the month of October, 119 for magistrate district. We've had 122. And when we get out-of-county warrants, we'll do video arraignment with them. So if they get released, they'll be able to release it saves on other counties' transport as well. We had a transport Tuesday, seven to the penitentiary, a men's facility in Los Lunas. We had seven also in October as well. Three females were transported in the month of October to prison in Grants. On December 19th, we will be having the installation of our property storage room with a storage company to come in and organize that property storage room. And it'll be 19 through the 23rd, and it'll be complete in a week. So we do have an interview for a captain on the 16th this month, and I did have one resignation November 3rd. So, and she really doesn't, didn't wanna, she wants to come back in a couple of months. She has some personal stuff going on and so she really, because I asked her like an exit question, like is there something other than staff shortage that we can do better or this? And she goes, I love my job here. It's just some personal things that I have to handle, so.
How understaffed are you right now?
We are probably like 33 short-staffed. And no applications at this time, so.
None.
None.
When your transport person retires on the 30th, do you have anybody that can fill in?
Pinson, she's one of my, she's overseeing booking and transport, transport scheduling. I've been helping with municipal in facility, magistrate in facility, and so we're doing the best we can. And the lieutenant is doing it. I mean, when we have court for people that are in Otero Prison, Lincoln, Hudson, we pick them up. Like lieutenant today is picking up one from Hudson and one from O to P for court the following week or a release on one or treatment on one. So I mean, we're doing the best we can. I think we've been holding the fort now. We have good staff. The staff that are there now are really banding together to make it work. And so, yeah, I mean, I think the ones that are there want to be here. So we're doing the best we can.
Good.
Any questions? Any questions?
That's all I have right now. Are you, well, are you, uh, are we gonna open up the other half, the new half of the facility, and try to man it as shorty as we are?
Uh, that, we can't do that right now.
Just have to wait?
We'll have to wait, right now, we're ma-managing, um, and with people housed elsewhere, we're managing. I mean, we're making it through, and we're getting the duties done. As soon as we get more staff, of course, we will bring people back and open areas that we can. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to our consent agenda items, number one.
Chairman?
Yes?
For consent, uh, agenda item, uh, eight, um, the, uh, Gosses have requested that we pull that, um, they have some information to add
Okay.
to that discussion.
Okay. Okay, alright. Did you need to pull anything? You good?
No.
Okay, alright. Do you wanna discuss this first, Kelly, or do you wanna go on with the rest of them? Did you wanna discuss number eight?
I just have a proposal that I think might work, uh, maybe a bad idea.
Well, we can hear it.
You wanna hear it now?
You wanna hear it now, or?
Whatever you want.
Just go ahead and hear it now. I've heard that before.
Can I hand you this?
Sure.
To the east? To the east of the firehouse, I can, I can give you maybe another quarter acre, half acre?
Um, could you speak into the microphone, please, and, uh, state your name, uh, real quick?
My name is Spike Goss. It may be a bad idea, if, if you say, "No, we don't wanna do that," I understand, but if you put a cattle guard in there at the highway coming off, you're gonna have to put a really wide cattle guard, for trailers, for even for picking people to pull out on the road. I would donate some more land to the east there, if maybe we could put the dumpsters there, and then put a cattle guard, maybe, right there where the fence line is at now. I don't know who would have to look at that to see.
Where's Tom?
I believe Tom's already left, but I would need Tom to look at An Ralph from the convenience center. So, we would have to make a trip up there and take a look at the proposal.
Okay.
And then we can get back.
If it's a bad idea, that's, that's okay, but I, I would, I would donate some more land if I need to, to help solve the problem. If you'd look at the rest of the pictures, the people abuse the heck out of their privilege. And I would hate to be the, the guy that has to pick up those dumpsters. It's just, they will not use the compactor, and why, I don't know.
There's Tom.
So...
Spike, if there was, uh, if it was a really big cattle guard that was put in, uh, that was sufficient for the things you talked about, would it, would that work? 'Cause I, I think that was the plan, was a, a large cattle guard.
Yes, and if that's what you did decide to do, I understand.
Okay.
I just got to thinking, and looking at that map, that it might help the county, help the community more.
Okay.
Maybe so, maybe no.
Correct me if I'm wrong, it's a fifty-foot cattle guard ordering, or it's pretty big?
It was like eighty-five.
Okay.
You talking about the one at the fire station?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Eighty-five feet?
About eighty-five, yeah.
I just hate, I hope my horses don't get in it, but we'll, we may have to take that check, it'll be a... What kinda cattle guard, I mean?
Basically, the same one we use on all our county roads, 'cause that's all we do.
Okay, well, it, did you, it, would you look at that and see what you think?
I can't.
Okay. So, it, it's up to you, maybe you wanna go ahead with what you got now, that's, I mean, it... Another guy, Tim, I can't think of his last name, thinks we should have somebody sit there and, and let people pay one day a week to... I'm okay with that, too, it's up to you guys. I mean, I've seen people, camp trailers, Texas plates, five of them, parked in the road, stopped in the road, pickups and trailers, long campers, and they're fifteen minutes carrying trash to the dumpsters. And so, I've seen people from almost the cloud rock dumping trash in those dumpsters, so, anyway, maybe a bad idea.
Commissioners, can I suggest we table this item until staff can meet with Spike and look at it?
Yes, I think that's a good idea. Alright, thanks, Spike.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Is this good for the people that up there, that live there?
To have the cattle guard put in there?
Yeah.
They're trying to keep those wild horses from getting in those trash dumpster, dumpsters up there, because they just spread trash all over the place.
Yeah, I saw, I saw the...
So, that's, that's kinda the thought process behind it.
Wild horses?
That's what they're saying, yeah.
No, not wild horses, not horses.
Oh, your horses? Oh, I thought they said wild horses.
They're not that wild.
Okay, I guess one...
Some are more wild, but not supposed to be.
Yes, ma'am.
And right also, they got to put in, uh, like, latches on the dumpsters to keep the bears out. Yeah, lids and, and latches to keep...
The, these are big, full con- containers.
They are, too.
Yeah, they're, they're big dumpsters.
The thirty-yarders or whatever?
They're a deal, and dump them into the truck, and up in there also, they, they, on the lid, there's, there's chains and latches, and we put the lid on, and catch bears out.
Commissioners, I, when I was up there recently, I witnessed people dropping off their trash, and I, that's a great idea, I don't know if it'll work, because I saw people very lazy, just setting their trash on the ground, instead of putting it in a dumpster. I don't think that they would feel motivated to have the effort to open it up.
Do these have lids on them, or are they just those big, open containers?
Open containers.
So, they don't even have a lid right now? Okay, I didn't think so. That's even worse.
May I say one more thing?
Sure.
When, when Richard Jurnon, uh, contacted Mom and Dad about this, my dad said, "I don't care, Spike, you tend to, I'm old, I'm done." So, uh, I told Richard, "Yes, be glad to donate to the county, for the community, for the firehouse." And I said, "All I ask is, Richard, a chain link fence," and he said, "Yes, no problem." Didn't get nothing in writing, it was just a gentleman's agreement. And I waited, and waited, and waited, and it, and they never did put it up, so I had to put a fence up, that little barbed wire fence. And I didn't put it up very good, thinking, pretty soon, we were gonna have a, uh, chain link fence around it. And, and there was never mention of putting dumpsters there. I wished I hadn't have done what I did, but, but I, I did. If I'd have known they were gonna put a dumpster there, I would have never agreed to that. The dumpster was over at the school at the time, but there was never mention of a dumpster to go there. So, and then, uh, he bits that Tommy Harrell has, when he was a commissioner, he called me six or eight times, wanting some land for a burn pit. And I feel guilty about not giving the county some, but I know what's gonna happen. There'll be tires there, there'll be batteries there, there will be everything there but brush. And so, so that's the reason I haven't done that, but maybe we need to talk about that in the future, so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna table this for now, okay? Alright, we'll move on to number one, request approval of accounts payable, bills, list BL thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. Number two, request approval of October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting minutes. Number three, request approval of healthcare assistance claims and disposition claims for November twenty twenty-two. Number four, request appro- approval of resolution number eleven dash ten dash twenty-two slash one eleven dash twenty budget adjustments. Number five, request approval of resolution number eleven dash ten dash twenty-two slash one eleven dash twenty-one sick leave buyback. Number six, request approval of resolution number ten dash eleven dash twenty-two slash one eleven dash twenty-four, the loan agreement between New Mexico Finance Authority for Dunigan Fire Department in the amount of a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Number seven, request approval of resolution number eleven dash ten dash twenty-two slash one eleven dash twenty-five, the loan agreement between New Mexico Finance Authority for the Lalusca Fire Department in the amount of ninety-one thousand dollars. Number nine, request approval to appoint Earl Sturman to the Otero County Public Land Use Advisory Council. Number ten, request approval to apply for the local assistance and tribal consistency fund, federal grant. Number eleven, request approval to submit annual fund act and service reports to NMEMS Bureau. And number twelve, request approval of a letter to New Mexico State Fire Marshal Office to remove the fire suppression system at the Otero County Fairgrounds Pavilion. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, or the consent items, I'll give a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so now we're gonna move on to the to the long list. Okay, the first one on the list, Janet Ellis.
Do I have to talk in this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
If you don't, they can't hear you at home.
My name's Janet Ellis, and I had a couple of questions for you. First of all, sometimes I don't think you guys are listening to the community, and what they want. You do whatever you want, when you want, and don't ask the people, or don't re-request people's opinion. Now, the second thing I wanna ask is, on Thursday night, August eleventh... Oh, shoot, hold on, I'm sorry. August eleventh. Jimmy, what'd you fix this? I apologize, I'm, I'm not good on a telephone, I don't have one. Thank you. On August eleventh, the Commissioners voted to sue the County of Secretary of State Oliver. It was to be one lawsuit with multiple causes, for instance, the lack of certification, the fact, the machines don't count folds correctly, or write-in candidates, and the high, high rate rare. What is the progress of this lawsuit? And the third one is, I voted for Larry Cott Marker as a write-in, and on the ballot, on the thing, it says, none was voted for him. And I don't understand that, that's one, the three things I don't understand, and I get upset with, and I wanna know some answers.
We have to get the county clerk in here about your voting question, I don't know about that, the lawsuit question, RB could probably speak to that.
Yeah, I am researching it, uh, lawsuits have been filed by other individuals, uh, for those causes of action, um, monitoring those to see how they progress. Uh, one was dismissed by the Supreme Court already, um, a writ of mandamus was filed to, um, prevent the machines, uh, from being used over the certification issue, the Supreme Court, uh, dismissed it. So, it'd be frivolous for us to file it again, um...
We're watching it, we're watching it. And the people need to know.
To your question about the write-in candidate, I believe, a write-in candidate is... They get certified to be a write-in candidate, and under the Public Land Commission ballot, there was a, um, a bubble to fill in for the write-in candidate.
I didn't see the bubble, I wrote it in.
Well, um...
I wrote Mo-Larry Marker, 'cause there was no Larry Marker on there.
And, and that machine's gonna trigger it to be pulled aside and, um, read and counted.
Well, somebody better count it, 'cause I wanna know how many he got.
I can tell you, he got forty-three, that's on the SLS website, he got forty-three votes.
Thank you.
They're still working through that, like, counting on that, so there may be more.
But a lot of people wanna know what's going on, and we don't know, we're not told, we're not even told in the, anywhere. And the people need to know, you guys are working for us, we put you there to work for us, and we don't feel you're working for us. That's my opinion, and that's all I have to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kenneth Payne?
Hello, I'm Kenneth Payne, I'm back again, seeing about, uh, changing the policy, possibly modifying the policy for felonies and firefighters. I know, like Matt said, we are red and short, 'cause I see them all the time, and I said, I had eight and a half years in the department, and I carried my gear with me. As it stands, most of the people working in town, or county road shop or somewhere, they're not available to take off when the calls come in. I am there, I carry my gear with me all the time, I'm available for any calls twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And I could say, I live like half mile from the station, and if, with, in no way being able to respond, you have to depend on Tully or Lalus, and it takes time for them to get there. Most of us live in mobile homes out there, but in that amount of time, a mobile home is gone. You know, I've been, I was with Jack Rabbit for eight and a half years, I, I paid my debt, you know, for my crime, I did. I got probation, she said, "Continue serving," came out of me. That is what I was doing, serving counties firefighter, you know, I enjoy it, I love it, and I just think that we should see about modifying it at least, so each case is looked at. I can see if I was a career criminal, no, I wouldn't want them doing anything, you know? But for me to, one time, saying, it's, uh, I, you know, I made, I messed up, like everybody does. I've, I've talked to lots of people, lots of police officers, other firefighters, and, uh, they all agree, you know, they would more have me there on probation, and able to put the fire out, and save their property, or their lives, or their house, than maybe possibly lose everything, because they don't have anybody there. And I just wanna bring it up, I, I could tell Matt, I'll keep coming until I find out something, but, uh, I said, well, you know, what I wanted to bring up again, and see what you all, maybe can bring it up in a meeting some other time, and, and maybe, like I said, not change it, not cancel that policy, 'cause I was in with that policy got put in. But, uh, just modify it, so like my case, you look at it, the ju- what the judge said, and all, and go by that, you know? And, uh, try and get more people in firefighting, 'cause...
Pam, do you wanna speak to the county policy?
We put that policy in place several years ago, for good reason. I don't wanna comment too much on the reason he is not a member of the fire department, it is a personnel matter, and should be discussed behind closed doors, out of fairness to him. Matt can fill you in on why, and the purpose of the policy.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I see, what I, what I was told by Koi was, uh, the person that did, that Matt said was totally wrong, here's my case right in here. And, uh, so I, you know, I don't, I don't mind, I, I speak about it publicly, 'cause I did wrong, and I know it, and I admit it, you know? So, it doesn't bother me that it's publicly known, but I just like to, I'm just trying to help this community, you know, like I said. And, so, okay.
Thank you. Jeannie Nichols?
Thank you.
Jeannie, oh, I'm sorry.
Hi.
Hi.
Jeannie Nichols, Tulareosa, thank y'all for allowing me speech. We have some questions. Okay, is that...
Yeah, pull it up a little closer.
Oops. Okay. On June ninth, David and Erin Clements presented to the Commissioners and the County irrefutable evidence of election fraud. That same day, y'all voted on, uh, number one, to approve the hand-counting of all ballots cast inside the Dominion voting system to verify vote count of machine after the June seventh primary. Number two, to approve removal of all election ballot drop boxes from the public square in attempt to secure our election of, in twenty twenty-two. Number three, approval to discontinue the use of Dominion voting machines before the twenty twenty-two general election. Why hasn't that happened? Why wasn't the primary election hand-counted? Are we hand-counting the midterm election, if not, why? According to CNN, exit polls showed that seven in ten voters... According to CNN, exit polls showed that seven in 10 voters are unhappy with the state of the nation and largely negative on Joe Biden. So they voted Democrat? This doesn't make sense. Analysis of the election night data reported by the New Mexico SOS and sent to Edison Research, which then pushes results out to the media outlets across the country, shows serious anomalies consistent with manipulation of the election. We can send you that data. The worst anomalies occurred in the governor's race in two of the three congressional seats. The data surely, the data clearly shows batches of votes being removed. The counts went down. This shows manipulation of the data. And I'm gonna insert that I've sat right here when there were video presentations and some experts speaking. It's, you can't, you can't ignore it. Midterm election, okay. Do not have confidence in the outcome of our elections. The anomalies in the data in New Mexico have only worsened this crisis in public confidence. Prove to the citizens of Otero County that we have fair elections. Hand count all the ballots, all the races. Assure us that the election is correct prior to certification. Extra election integrity issue to be addressed regarding Robin's behavior. This will get it on record. I recommend this to be separate from number one, as to not distract from it. The SOS's own guidance document titled Determining Voter Intent says, "A ballot properly marked with any device other than the marking device provided to the voter shall be counted." So not our only alternative marking device is illegal, but poll workers are prohibited from looking at voters' ballots to determine. Okay, another time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I agree. There it is.
Marcia Sturman.
I ask the commissioners to please pass an ordinance making Otero County a sanctuary for the unborn. On November 7th, Hobbs, New Mexico passed a sanctuary city for the unborn ordinance. Why can't we do the same here to protect the lives of boys and girls in the womb? Is abortion right or is it wrong? It's a big question that's lost in societal debate, that mostly focused on legality, but really, whether it's right or wrong is the most important question about abortion. This is by Dennis Prager. So is ending the life of a human fetus moral? Does a human fetus have any value and rights? It's a scientific fact that a human fetus is a human life. Those who argue that human fetus has no rights say that a fetus is not a person. But even if you believe that, it doesn't mean the fetus has no intrinsic value or no rights. There are many living beings that are not persons that have both value and rights, dogs for example. And that's moral argument number one. A living being doesn't have to be a person in order to have intrinsic moral value and rights. When challenged with this argument, people usually change the subject to the rights of the mother, meaning the right of the mother to end the fetus's life under any circumstance, for any reason, and at any time in her pregnancy. Is that moral? It is only if we believe that human fetus has no intrinsic worth. But in most cases, nearly everyone believes that the human fetus has essentially infinite worth and almost absolute right to live. When? When a pregnant woman wants to be, wants to give birth, then society and its laws regard the fetus as so valuable that if someone were to kill it, that person would be prosecuted for homicide. Only if a pregnant woman doesn't want to give birth do people regard the fetus as worthless. Now, does that make sense? It doesn't seem to. Either a human fetus has worth or it doesn't, and this is moral argument number two. On what moral grounds does a mother alone decide a fetus's worth? We certainly don't do that with regard to newborn child. It is society, not the mother or the father, that determines whether a newborn child has worth and a right to live. So the question is, why should that be different for the human that's being born? Why does one person, a mother, get to determine that that being has a right to live? People respond by saying that a woman has a right to control her body. Now, that is entirely correct. The problem here is that the fetus is not her body, it is in her body. It is a separate body, and that's moral number three. No one ever asks a pregnant woman, how is your body? When asking about the fetus, they say, how's the baby? Number four, virtually everyone agrees that the moment the baby comes out of the womb, killing the baby is murder, but deliberately killing it a few months before birth is considered no more morally problematic than extracting a tooth. And I have one more point to make that I guess I won't have time for.
Thank you, Marcia.
Thank you.
We agree.
Mary Lou Martin. Good morning.
Nice that y'all made it showed up today, huh? I'm Mary Lou Martin, from Alamo Board of New Mexico. And I have one that, where are we handed, why were we handed a green voter permit sheets with our ballots when we voted? They're carefully stacked in the order that the ballots are put in the tabulator. Torrance County does not have these voter permits. Why do we? Are our votes being tracked, and by whom? And what about a bigger venue for y'all to, you know, so that you can, we can have more people here to listen and everything, so that we can get more people in it, so they'll know what's going on in our county? And I thank you all. Appreciate you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Jane Richardson. Good morning.
My name's Jane Richardson, and I am the Director of the Pregnancy Help Center, soon to be Pregnancy Resources Plus. And I'm here to speak regarding number 071411109, Otero County as a sanctuary for life. As already decided by our citizens, the majority agrees on Otero as a sanctuary city. I have been working with women in unplanned pregnancies for 32 years. Nineteen of those have been here in Otero County. I've seen hundreds, if not thousands, of women facing unplanned pregnancies. I love each lady that comes into our center. No matter what she's thinking, no matter what she's facing, no matter what she chooses. There is a stirring in our nation since Roe versus Wade was turned over. Many women have opened up to me recently about past abortions that they've experienced themselves and have suffered in silence for years. It's not an easy thing to talk about. I don't think it's something we often talk about, is the shame, sometimes the guilt that can come along with making a choice to have an abortion. Once a woman who ran an organization that counsels women thanked me for what I do, and she said, I can't tell you how many times I've talked to women, and as we get through the layers of the onion from counseling, the bottom court issue comes to a past abortion. I think we have a mental health crisis in our county, nation. And I think we have to be looking at what is going on in our society? Why is this happening? I know there's probably a lot of factors that are resulting in our mental health epidemic. I think sex is a beginning of an unplanned pregnancy. Free sex is costing the lives of many. When we talk about responsible sex, but we have to say, we have to ask the question, does a condom protect somebody's heart and protect their value? We have tried to push aside conscience in this matter for almost 50 years with having abortion legalized in our, in our country. But we have women that are still struggling, and what is it done? If we don't put a high price tag on the value of life, whether born or not, we make a statement about the dignity of life. Oprah Winfrey quotes, "You won't become what you want, you become what you believe." So what kind of statement are we gonna make about life?
Thank you, Jane. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Joni Ellis. I like your shirt.
Thank you. Land of the free and home of the brave. Good morning.
Good morning.
What has the country, the county done in the last two months to support our ranchers? How long has it been known no endangered mice live in that area? In years past, Doug Moore cut the fences and stopped the federal government overreach. What is stopping you?
That's right.
And I want to give really good thanks to Koi Griffin, because he is one that has spoken up for our, our voices, our rights, we, the people, and I hope he keeps on standing strong and keep on fighting for what we believe in. God, number one, our country. Because if we don't do this now, we're gonna lose our country. People gotta realize, you guys gotta start standing up, fighting, voting. We can't cowl down to, we can't cowl down to what's going on. We gotta keep on fighting and keep our voices made known. Thank you.
Thank you, Joni. Looks like the pen ran out of ink. I don't know what that is.
Arnold.
Oh, is that you? Your root pen ran out of ink. I'm like, like disappearing ink.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, oops. I passed out some information. And prove to the citizens of Otero County that we have fair election. Hand count all the ballots, all the races.
Yes.
Assure us that the election is correct prior to certification. Another thing, we, that was cut off, and I'll bring this up. Extra election integrity issues be addressed regarding Robin's behavior. This will get into record. I recommend this to be separate, number one, as not to distract from it. The Secretary of State's own guide document titled Determining Voter Intent says, "A ballot properly marked with any device other than the marking device provided to you, voter shall be counted." So not only are alternative markings device legal, but poll workers were prohibited by N M S A 1-1-1-12-59B from looking to voters' ballot to determine what marking device the voters use. Election workers, trainees, reported that Otero County Clerk Robin Holmes directed them to take down names if anyone used this other marking device and that referred them to the district attorney. This is a clear violation of the law. Thank you so much.
Amen. Thank you. Why didn't you go on that list?
I actually talked to Robin about this, because I got some emails about it, and when you go in to vote, and I know when I went in to vote, you, I could have used whatever colored pen I want. I mean, they don't look at you, and they don't look over your shoulders. So I think that they're not gonna pull ballots because you've used the red pen or a blue pen. I mean, they go, and you feed the ballot into the machine yourself. So I think some of this might have been misunderstanding, and I asked Robin about the comment about the district attorney, and she said she said that flippantly because somebody had said, what are you gonna do, not count our ballots? And she said, what am I gonna do, turn you into the district attorney? That's how she worded it to me. And so if she wants to come over and, you know, speak to this, I don't know, but that's what she, she told me, that that was kind of, she said that in a flippant manner. She did not say, I'm gonna arrest somebody, I'm gonna have somebody thrown, you know, charged with the district attorney. So I just wanted to put that out there, because I did reach out to Robin, because I got emails about this, and I wanted to clarify what they were telling people. And she assured me this wasn't, this wasn't happening, that they can't pull your ballot because you did not use the black pen. She said that the machines get kind of gummed up if you put a machine in there with wet ink on it, and I know where I work, it does mark, it'll mark the surface of something that you're copying, and then it'll transpose it onto the next copy you make. And so I'm just, just assuming on my part that that does that. So as long as the inks dry before it goes into the tabulator, I don't think there's an issue. But, I mean, that's just, that's just what I was told by Robin. I did, I did reach out to her about this.
May I say something?
Sure.
On Wednesday, one of my friends went with a blue pen, they told you, you can't use the blue pen.
How did they know they were gonna use the blue pen?
She had the blue pen with her. They're actually true.
Because when I went, I mean, when I go in that little cubicle, and, you know, I can either use the one pen that's there, I could have pulled a pen out of my purse. I just, I didn't know how, you know, if they were stopping people at the door.
Corky said the same thing. She went and she pulled a pen out, my ex-wife, and the lady that was working there said the same thing, that she had to work, use the pen that they provided.
Was provided, so, I don't know.
Even out of the taste in his door, use our pen.
It's in statute that you're supposed to use the marking device provided, but if you get in the box and you pull out your own pen, no one's gonna stop you or be watching you, is essentially how it, how it plays out.
And I know that when you do a mail-in ballot, you can use whatever pen you have at your home, but of course, by the time it's mailed in, the ink's dry. So that was, that was what Robin told me the whole issue was, was the ink being still wet when it went through the tabulator, and the markers they provide dry pretty quick. So that's just what I was told.
Ballpoint pens don't have leftover ink or hot ink like that?
They, they can when they're, were wet, but I mean, it would have to be immediate, so, I'm just telling you what I was told by Robin. So just, I did check on it. Marguerite Hernandez.
My name is Marguerite Hernandez, and I'm a resident of Otero County. I want to speak first to the, about the number of commissioners of Otero County. I believe effective and responsible management of any area is well populated as Otero County needs a five-member commission. Any less leaves you vulnerable. Any absences would leave you and the residents of the county even more vulnerable, vulnerable to poor decisions and irreparable mistakes. And I strongly urge that you approve an increase in the number of commissioners of Otero County. Secondly, please consider an amendment to the resolution to protest the lives of the board and your constituents. That should be your first responsibility. Finally, I am one resident who is satisfied with the veracity of Otero County's voting process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alterson.
I can't read the last name. Alterson.
Good morning. I'm Arthur Alterson. I live in Elamagordo. I'd like to speak on some items on the agenda. The first is the five-member commission. I think holding a public meeting is the least that the commission can do on this important issue. Five commissioners means more heads to do the commission's work and more opportunity for an efficient apportionment of commissioner tasks. It also means a fair representation of subareas within the county, means commissioners will have fewer constituents, so they will have more time to spend on individual constituents co- concerns. And it means that there's less possibility for a single Commissioner to hijack a commission meeting for his pet project. The second item I'd like to speak on is Item 19, which is the sanctuary city issue. I think, once again, holding a public meeting is the proper thing to do on this, that Otero County is now a healthcare desert, as are many small cities and rural areas, and that the sanctuary resolution does nothing but discourage potential providers of all medical services from locating here, in addition to discouraging other people that might wanna locate either their families or their businesses here. Practically speaking, there is no abortion clinic that is going to locate in Otero County, even if we went out shopping for one. The last issue I would like to address is Item 17, which is actually the only real action item here that I'm discussing. And that is the Forest Service letter concerning the ranching families. I was here back in August and this was discussed and it perked my interest. And I think that ranching is an asset to Otero County and that these families should be supported in every reasonable way. It's both for the good of the county and it's the decent thing to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy Borella?
You go, girl. You go, girl.
Good morning, Commissioners. Amy Borella?
Good morning.
I would like to speak on the item for rescinding the resolution for Sanctuary County. One of my proudest moments of all the resolutions that we've ever passed was when we were at the city commission meeting a few years ago and it was about passing resolutions to support our Second Amendment. And when it came to the vote, we had a city commissioner that was a Democrat and she said, "While I don't personally believe this, I need to vote to represent my constituents." And she voted to pass the resolution because she knows what the majority wanted. And I think this is the situation here. I think that item should be removed or denied for the public. It's been handled already. We need to get the politics out of our commissions and get our commission back to business. That being said, with the five-member commission, I know that our constituents voted on that several years ago. And so, I would request that this get tabled to when we have an extra $500,000 or so and can address that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Coy Griffin?
Evening and morning, Commissioners. Coy Griffin, a duly elected and legitimate County Commissioner of District 2, as well as founder of Cowboys for Trump. And I'd like to just start out by saying, looking up here at you, Stephanie, in this seat is a total disgrace. And the reason why I say it's a total disgrace is because you ran for office seven times in Otero County, trying to win the support of the people and trying to be a voice for the people of Otero County, and you lost all seven times that you ran. The people... I'm talking right now. I'm talking right now. I'm not having a conversation. You lost every time, every time, every... No, every time you ran for office, every time you ran for office, you lost. And so, the governor, the governor appoints a loser into this seat, somebody who has... Somebody who has lost seven times. The governor...
I'm not a loser.
I'm gonna have to have more time too because I'm getting interrupted too much. So, the more you talk and interrupt...
You're a criminal.
Okay. So, the governor, out of her spite, out of the governor's spite for the people of Otero County and me, they appointed somebody who had lost seven times.
But I'm not a criminal.
The people of Otero County did not want you to be their representative. And now, you've lost eight times. From two days ago, you lost for the eighth time. And you're putting stuff on the agenda?
But I'm not a criminal.
You're not a voice of the people of Otero County. You're a voice... You're a voice of the radical, progressive, loser Democrat, Michelle Gresham.
Coy. You made your point, so...
I made my point. How have I made my point?
I will not be abused in public.
Now, listen, listen. Listen, listen, listen. I have sat in that seat, I have sat in that seat for three years and been abused by everybody in this place. Have sat here and have spoken to me the way you're speaking to me, Stephanie.
Why is he allowed to do this?
You took a recall petition. You took a recall petition around District 2 to try to get me removed from office. Oh, I can't, I can't speak now?
Yeah, you can, Coy. Remember, that feels?
Oh, because of...
That's enough.
It's never been cleared before. I've sat up here and I've taken help.
I'm not here now.
Well, now you get tough. Now you're tough guy, huh? Now you're gonna get tough. You never were tough before.
Why don't you clear the room?
Why are you grabbing him like you're having a debate?
Everybody out.
I see the double standard. I was a so...
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and continue, but I am asking you right now that we can keep this civil. We're all godly people here.
Amen.
And we need to keep that in mind.
Amen.
And y'all haven't seen me write in on my broom yet, but it was about there this morning. So, we're gonna keep this civil. We all wanna have everybody's voices heard, but we are gonna be respectful. Agreed?
Amen, absolutely.
Okay.
And, and I appreciate you letting me finish, Vicki. And as you say, we are all people of God and followers of God, and, and we do stand on the truth. And the truth of the matter is, is that Stephanie Dubose ran for office eight times now, and she's been beat every time she's ran for an elected position in Otero County. Um, one more thing is Stephanie Dubose worked very hard against, in the recall campaign against me. Whenever the, the Democrats were trying to recall me, she knocked on doors. She took a petition around. She, she advocated for my recall, and she saw that recall fall flat on its face by not receiving 28% of the support. Stephanie Dubose is not a voice for the people of District Two. That's been proven by her getting beat over and over and over and over again. So, whenever she puts stuff on the agenda, that could be coming straight from the desk of Michelle Grisham, who appointed Stephanie Dubose. She is not a, she's not an elected representative, not like you and Gerald are. So, I just hope that you take that into consideration for everything that she puts on the agenda is like it's coming from Michelle Grisham's desk, not the people of District Two. And so, um, that's what I have to say about that. I, uh, I, the, the reason why Stephanie is here today is it's built on fraud. It's a fraudulent decision from Judge Matthews in Santa Fe that removed me from office to begin with. He did not have the jurisdictional standing to do it, and he never, I never should have been removed from office. And if I would've had the support of this county, I don't believe that I would have. If you and Gerald would have stood next to me along with Sheriff David Black, if he would have said, "No, I don't support this." But they were, you guys were coming under the counsel of Roy Nichols, who's gives bad advice. Roy, when Roy applied for this job, I don't know what he told you, I don't know what he told you, Gerald, but what Roy told me is that he went to study the law so he could learn how to fight back against the government. And that really impressed me, even though Roy was the attorney for the recall committee, I was able to look past that because I thought Roy actually would fight for the county. And Roy has done nothing but give bad advice and lay down for the county, or lay down for the federal government since he's been sitting in that, in that seat. I don't know if he gets his advice from Blair Dunn, or where he's getting his advice from, but it's not good advice. And I'm just telling you that because we do have to fight right now. Our country is under attack like it's never been. And the most critical and instrumental place to fight from is on the local county level. Through your seat, through Gerald's seat, through David Black's seat back there in the back, we have to stand strong, we have to fight back, and, and, and we can get through it. But Stephanie, I'm sorry, uh, maybe you felt a little bit of the burn that I felt the last three years up there because this is the way that y'all have treated me.
Thank you, Coy.
Thank you.
Do I have a chance to respond, if you'd like?
I never did anything on the recall, never. I never went door to door, I never did anything.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. I'm sorry for my behavior.
That's okay. And I'm sorry if you took it personally, Stephanie.
It was not personally.
Because it was a personal attack, boy. But I, I like it, and I didn't mean it personally.
Sure you did, sit down.
Okay.
I'm done.
Matt, you're, you're disrupting this meeting.
I'm trying to be quiet, but you two's bothering me.
Sheriff, would you, would you like to remove Matt?
That's your, your choice.
Yes, I, I think you need to go outside and cool off for a little bit, Matt. Let's go. Matt, I ask you to leave, and I'm not kidding.
I understand that, but David is the one who was making the scene. I sat down and was pleased with it.
No, you've been standing up doing your hand signals and all that, and I'm over it. Matt, I am telling you as Chair of this commission to get up and leave this commission right now.
What's the double standard here, though? Why wasn't Coy rude? Coy made a bigger scene than I did. No, I mean, there's, there's, there's really, there's really a double standard here. Okay, well, why isn't he being escorted out forcefully? Did you see?
Okay, we're gonna stop the meeting until Matt leaves the room.
Do you see how partisan you're being? Do you see who's surrounded by law enforcement who made a bigger scene than I did and is not being escorted out? So, why don't we at least make this fair for the public to watch?
Matt?
That you guys are doing your job fairly.
You've been asked to leave.
Okay.
You got, you got about 30 seconds.
And then what, you're, so what about Coy?
I'm dealing with you right now. Okay, I'm dealing with you.
Which is very partisan. Don't you realize that? No, it's very partisan.
She has asked you to leave this meeting.
Why haven't you asked Coy to leave, Madam Chair?
Because Coy had his time to speak, and he was up here speaking.
What about the scene he caused?
What about the scene that you caused?
I'm causing a scene because you guys are causing a scene.
Okay, we're either gonna clear the room again, or you're gonna leave, you pick.
Yeah, that part scene must have been fair for everybody. And then I'll come back right after that.
Matt, I'm asking you to leave.
Okay, but on what basis are you asking me to leave?
Because you're being disruptive.
I'm trying to point out a difference here. I'm trying to point out that you're being partisan, you're not being fair.
And I'm telling you as Chair, I want you to leave the room right now.
So, why isn't Coy leaving?
Because I didn't ask Coy to leave.
Here we're gonna be watching. I'm gonna stay here with their cameras, because I don't trust you, for obvious reasons. Why isn't Coy leaving?
Matt, please leave.
Why is Coy leaving? All right, it's all on record, AC will do it again.
Okay, Spike, Goss, did you wanna speak again? You were on the sign-in thing.
No.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay, Heather? No, no, we're not gonna add anymore. We've gotta get on with our executive session.
Right.
Okay, Heather?
Hi, my name's Heather Flodeen. Um, I support what Arthur said about a five, um, commission. Um, I think that's important for the reasons that he stated also, so I'm not gonna go into that. Um, I also support the agenda item to hold a special meeting to rescind the resolution regarding Otero County as a sanctuary city for, uh, sanctuary county for life. Um, the majority spoke at the past county and city meeting on the issue, and on both accounts, the resolutions were passed despite the majority opposition. Um, I think you can see examples of how constituents feel on the matter, um, and the results of, of Tuesday's elections throughout the nation. Please consider rescinding this non-binding but divisive resolution. Please protect choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
No, we're gonna keep going. We've got an executive session after this, and we've got an attorney here for our courthouse lawsuit, so I'm really trying to keep this moving, so.
I appreciate it, thank you.
So, Donna Swanson is the last one on this list?
She's not here.
She's not here, okay. All right, well, we're gonna keep rolling then, so we can... Okay, we're gonna move on to new business. Number 14, request approval of resolution number 11-10-22 slash 111-22, a resolution requesting the New Mexico State Transportation Commission to approve the use of off-road highway motor vehicles on paved sections of New Mexico highways 24, 130, 244, and 65, 63 within the jurisdictional boundaries and control of the county of Otero.
I submitted this last Tuesday. Last Tuesday, or last week, we had a meeting on, uh, uh, open meeting on, on getting input on, on this right here. So, what this is, the step two, we had to up, upgrade our ordinance, and this is step two of that process to send this to the New Mexico State Highway Department, uh, to encourage the opening of these roads. So, that's what this is all about.
Well, I don't have any more discussion on it. Um, I'd like to make a motion to arrest, to approve the resolution number 111-10-22, 111-22, resolution, a resolution requesting the New Mexico State Transportation Commission to approve the use of off-highway motor vehicles on paved sections of New Mexico highways 24, 130, 244, and 65, 63 within the jurisdictional boundaries and control of the county of Otero.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, number 15, request approval of resolution number 11-10-22, 111-23, supporting the New Mexico County's 2023 legislative priorities. Every year, we have to submit these so that the, so we know what we're gonna be supporting when the legislature gets into session.
Right, exactly.
And this year... These are, I'm gonna just go ahead and, and read this real quick so that you kinda know what we're looking at. Whereas the county of, whereas the Otero County Commission is charged with protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Otero County, and whereas state statutes and policies can either adversely affect or greatly enhance the ability of the county to meet its obligations, and whereas the Board of County Commissioners adopts a set of annual priorities in order to communicate with the New Mexico Legislature, import statutory and policy changes needed to build stronger communities in and throughout Otero County. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the governing body of Otero County that the following policy changes are supported by the Board of County Commissioners. Number one, legislation that carry, that creates a matching fund to help counties pay for construction and renovation of the state district courthouses. Number two, legislation and funding to increase the availability of services for behavioral health and substance abuse. Number three, legislation and funding efforts to provide an increased level of training for government employees to deal with individuals in behavioral health crisis. Number four, legislation that changes the makeup and powers of the law enforcement academy to increase authority and to enhance the ability of the LA to track, discipline, and make determinations regarding the continued certification of law enforcement officers with a history of disciplinary issues. Number five, legislation that provides additional training and funding for public safety personnel in the areas of crisis intervention, dealing with individuals suffering from mental illness and substance abuse issues, dealing with individuals in behavioral health crisis. Number six, legislation to provide funding and statutory support for mental health, resources, and crisis intervention teams. Number seven, legislation that creates funding for emergency communication, annual licensing fees required for radio communications as part of the state's 700 megahertz interoperable communication system. Number eight, legislation that supports election integrity and enhances trust in elections. Number nine, legislation that supports and enhances border security. Number 10, legislation that addresses elk population control and the negative impact the elk population has on ranching and agriculture. So, that's what we're looking to, kind of, have the legisla, to support in the legislative session in January. Does anybody have any comments, or?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, so, I would like to make a motion to approve resolution number 10 dash, I mean, 11-10-22, dash, 111-23, supporting the New Mexico County's 2023 legislative priorities. I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Ready? Number 16, request approval to send letters regarding US 54 state line drive intersection to New Mexico and Texas Department of Transportation. Do you wanna speak to that?
Yes, this was brought up at the meetings I've been going to in Chaparral, um, about the seriousness of the, where Highway 54 and state line intersect, right there by the Edge of Texas restaurant, of all the number of accidents and stuff like that. Come to find out, um, the state of Texas, that, that intersection is in Texas. So, all the county can do is ask that the Texas DOT, uh, take note on that. Come to find out, they are, they have a plan on that. Uh, so, we still wanna send the letter. Uh, I'm not a big plan, or a big fan on the plan that they have, but anything is gonna help that intersection. So, that's all that this is, is just a letter to the Texas Highway Department, asking them to try to analyze this and do something on this intersection. RB, you have anything you wanna add to that?
Uh, I forget what, uh, the plan they have in place, that the, the project that they're, um, about to initiate. It's like a diverted intersection. Um, it'll create, it'll prevent, um, I believe, right-hand, left-hand turns through the intersection, and will create a, a middle area for, for cars to do U-turns. Um, it's very Texas-style intersection. Um, it, it, it will, it'll be an improvement, but we included in the letter that they, um, consider, uh, installing a traffic signal, uh, at that intersection. So, um, they have a, a, a little framework that they use to, um, determine what is appropriate for an intersection, whether a traffic signal's appropriate. Um, so, hopefully, if they haven't done that analysis, uh, this letter will at least get them to consider it.
The reason why I wasn't a big fan of it is, say you're coming out of the Chaparral area on, on state line high, state line road, and you wanna head north on 54 like you're coming back to Alamogordo, you're gonna have to pull out in, cross two lanes of traffic, and then get in their turn lane. That's one of the big reasons, and it's the same thing on the other side. That's one of the reasons I, I'm not a big fan of that plan. Uh, I wish they would put a stoplight and reduce the speed limit right there. Just up the road, probably mile, maybe two miles, they have another stoplight. And then a little bit farther, they have another stoplight. You sit and watch the number of vehicles going across from Chaparral going to work in El Paso, where they jump on Railroad and Dire. It's, it's unbelievable how much traffic goes across there, and they get all balled up right in the middle of the, of the lanes, so. Anyway, I'm hoping that they pay close attention to that and try to figure out something good on it. That's all.
Do you have anything?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, I make a motion to approve sending the letters regarding US 54 state line drive intersection to New Mexico and state, or Texas Department of Transportation. Do I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, number 17, request approval to send follow-up letter to the United States Forest Service Regional Forester.
Commissioners, um, I submitted this, uh, we've since sending our letter, uh, to the Regional Forester at the end of September, pressing them on coordination and their actions in the Lincoln National Forest. We've not had a response. Uh, this is a follow-up letter, um, and in that, um, we highlight, uh, the reasons why coordination is important between the county and Forest Service, such as the fact that the fences they're building along the Rio Penasco, um, some of them go right along the road where we, we need to plow, uh, snow in the winter, and those fences either prevent us from clearing the roads, or those fences are gonna get plowed over, uh, which has happened previously. Um, that's no good for either entity, either us or the Forest Service. Um, so, this letter, uh, highlights those for the Regional Forester, and it also proposes a meeting the first or second week of December in which not only Otero County, um, but Eddy, Lincoln, and Chavez County, who all have, uh, interests in the Lincoln National Forest, uh, can come to the table and, uh, have a follow-up discussion. We met in February, uh, all four counties in Roswell, uh, and talked about the, the revised forest plan that they're working on. Um, and we left that meeting with the intention of, of regrouping and, um, meeting again. Uh, so, this is, uh, kinda forcing and pushing that point. Um, hopefully, we'll get a response, uh, soon, and we, we can get that meeting scheduled in Roswell.
Okay, I, I really, I think this is a good letter, and I'd like to read it so everyone in here knows what we're doing. This was, um, to Makiko Martin, she's the Regional Forest, Forester, Southwestern Region. Dear Mrs. Martin, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Otero County, write to follow up on our previous letter dated 27 September 2022. As of the writing of this letter, we have not received response from you or any member of the United States Forest Service. Our hope is that the lack of response is due to your legal department working on our proposed coordination agreement. We write again to highlight an example of why coordination between our two entities is so vital and to bring additional items of concern to your attention. In order to better facilitate the coordination between your office and the county and to obtain a response to our concerns, we request a meeting directly with you, and, with you either on December 1st or December 5th. As these issues are also of great concern to Chavez, Lincoln, and Eddy Counties, they will be joining, joining us as well. Recently and in the past, the United States Forest Service erected fences in the Lincoln National Forest along county roads without consulting Otero County. Unfortunately, the location of these fences is not compatible with the county's snowplows and impede the county's ability to fulfill its responsibilities for clearing dangerous snow conditions from roadways. Coordination and open lines of communication would prevent such situations from occurring. Regarding fencing in the Lincoln- Regarding fencing in the Lincoln National Forest, currently there is a construction of enclosures along the Rio Penasco on the Sacramento Grazing Association grazing allotment. In addition to portions of this fencing blocking the county's ability to plow snow, we also have other concerns. First, the planned construction of enclosures only leaves one water access point for the SGA cattle. The access point requires the cattle to navigate down a steep bank to access water. This is dangerous for the cattle and constitutes, constitutes animal cruelty. Further, it will cause unnecessary erosion, counter to any principles of environmental stewardship. Secondly, our understanding is that the intent of these exposures is to protect, is the protection of critical habitat areas. We find it odd that the fences construction, constructed only prevent cattle from access in the riparian area while elk and deer can come and go freely. It is a fact that the elk population rivals or exceeds the number of cattle on the SGA allotment, and can impact the critical habitat area in the same manner as cattle. If the United States Forest Service truly intended to protect these critical habitat areas, then game fences would be constructed to exclude cattle, deer, and elk. Much like the issues we raised in our previous letter, the only United States Forest Service effort is focused on the SGA and the ranching industry. Meanwhile, off-road vehicles, campers, and elk are free to access critical habitat areas with impunity, which is why we again bring to your attention the perception that the Lincoln National Forest policies are anti-ranching and retaliatory against the SGA for merely attempting to assert and protect their water rights. Again, Lincoln National Forest Management and the decisions directly impact the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of Otero County. We are charged with protecting the health, welfare, and safety of Otero County and are seeking a productive, proactive relationship with the United States Forest Service. A relationship that respects and understands the responsibilities and concerns of Otero County. To that end, ranching is an integral part of Otero County customs and culture, as well as being a county economic interest, and we will fight vigorously for it. Please let us know as soon as possible if December 1st or 5th will work with your schedule. If this does not work, please provide an alternate date to us by November 28th. The meeting will be held in Roswell at 2:00 PM unless there's a better time that fits your schedule. We look forward to hearing back from you and to having a good discussion on the, discussion on these issues at the end of this month. Now, when you think we're not doing anything for the ranching families, we are fighting for them. We had a, a good meeting the other day, it was, it was the four counties again. It was us, Lincoln, Chavez, and Eddy. And we're, we're bringing some of the sheriffs in, up to speed. Sheriff Black was in on that meeting with us. We're gonna have, we're gonna be going to Roswell for this next meeting, so we are fighting, and we're not giving up. RB and I went up to this, this latest fencing fiasco that's going up on the Rio Penasco. Spike and Kelly took us up there. And they've got this damn fence right along the road. It's got these probably six-inch wooden poles. Then they've got two of the T-posts, they've got the four-inch wire fencing all underneath, and then two rows of barbed wire across the top of that, and it goes on for frickin' ever. The water is right in the middle of that enclosure. So these cattle have hell getting down there, it's a steep incline. And then on one end of it, they stopped building it. But they expect Spike and Kelly to keep their cattle out of that. How the hell are you gonna do that when it's not even finished? So I mean, this is beyond the pale. And if anybody thinks this is just our ranching community, wake up. Because they came after our loggers, they shut down the logging up there, they're coming after the ranchers. After the ranchers, there'll be the hunters, and then it'll be the recreationalists. So if you think this doesn't affect everybody in this room, wake up. And where they're putting in this fence right now, it is a proposed area for this mouse. They haven't even found the mouse there yet.
Thank you.
So if they can do that and get away with it, they can fence off our whole forest. And give us the middle finger and say, you're not going up there. So that's what's happening.
Okay, in Roswell, what time is it in Roswell?
It's at 2:00 right now, but we don't have a, an exact date. We're waiting to hear back from the Forester.
So anybody can go to it?
Yes. And also, we copy Travis Mosley, Robert Foxworth, and Brian Furby. And Brian is like the head Fred for all of this stuff. So we're hoping that we can get him to attend this meeting as well. So I'm just telling you guys, you better start paying attention to this stuff. Because if you think those cattle farmers aren't important to this area, it's important to our economy, it's important for our food supply. I mean, do you wanna be getting your food from China? Cuz that's where we're headed.
Well, you see, where you go into the stores and all the shelves are empty. I went into Walmart, and I was getting some stuff for, you know, my coffee and air费. And all that was empty. You guys gotta wake up.
I know.
If we're gonna sit here and lose our cattle, we're losing everything else.
Well, you need to pass all this information on to your friends and family because this is, this is an overreach of the federal government.
I knocked on doors for Amy Barilla, I, you know, I've been at the, the park, at the par, at the parade. I go out and do everything I can. I come to these board meetings, I go to the commissioners' meetings. That's the way we should be.
Yeah, well, we need to support our, our ranchers, for sure. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to approve sending this letter to the United States Forest Service Regional Forester. Do I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Definitely.
I'd like to fly it up there on my broom. Okay. Number 18, discuss and consider and hold a special meeting to revisit the 2016 initiative to increase the Board of County Commissioners to five members. I don't support this, I don't think our county's grown enough size enough to support this. Financially, I, we need money so bad for other things. We've got roads that are begging for help. And, I mean, I, I, I didn't take this lightly. I mean, this is, this is what I've been doing for the last week. This is stuff on increasing to five, and, and I can't support this. So that's, that's, that's my two cents on it.
So, when I first ran four years ago, this was a, an item, and I was not for it at that time. I pulled the information at that time. So I, again, went back and got all the numbers salary-wise, to redo this commission room for the voting. For the first year, to have two more commissioners is gonna cost us approximately $475,000, one year. The, their salary and stuff for a year is $102,000 a year. So it's not a feasible deal. I positively believe that three commissioners can still run this county just fine. So that's, I'm opposed to the, of the meeting.
People are with you. All right.
Do you have anything?
Well, I, I just thought, when we voted on this in 2016, it was an initiative. In this state, you're not allowed to do a referendum. Where I come from, you are. So it said, shall the county commission have commission, five commissioners? Seventy-four percent voted yes, 26% voted no. And I think it was a total of 38,000 that voted in total. Then we were told afterwards, it wasn't a law, it was only a survey. So I, my question is, why was it on the ballot? And then there was no discussion afterwards by the past commission or the present commission? That's all I'm really saying, that there was no real, you know, to give the population, the people who voted, either way, a chance to say, we should look at, we should give this a second look, or whatever. And I understand the money is a, a great deal of money and to make that happen. But all I said was, you know, I would like to revisit that, and maybe give the public another chance to say what they thought. But of course, we'd have to weigh in on the, the salaries and the money and so forth that would go into it. That was my only intent in bringing it forward.
Every two years, this, Commissioner Boyd, this comes up. We have the same conversation two years ago on the election. It just, we have, if you was to sit through a budget hearings and meetings and see where we scratch around for every penny to try to keep
Right, sure.
our roads taken care of, our equipment, or the county employees a decent salary, and then to throw another half a million dollars in on one year, it would devastate, so.
Well, I was just trying to give the public another opportunity to put their input. That's basically why I put it out there.
Okay, does anybody have anything else? Okay. I make a motion to consider and hold a special meeting to revisit the 2016 initiative to increase the Board of County Commissioners to five members. Do I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Motion fails.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, number 19, discuss and consider to hold a public meeting to rescind resolution number 07-14-22/111-09 regarding, regarding Otero County as a sanctuary for life. I for one, I'm not gonna rescind this, and it's the way I feel. Someday when I stand before God, I don't plan on having to apologize for this. So I feel it very strongly, and, and I, we've already been down this road, and I have no desire to rescind this.
Yes.
Four years ago, when we first brought this in, this came up, and I voted for the abortion deal for two reasons. One was if a woman was raped or incest of any type, that she would be allowed to have it, and if there was a, a medical problem with the child. So on the last resolution that we had, all those adjectives were added to the resolution. So I'm still standing my ground on when we opposed, this is the right for life county right here. My feelings are still the same.
Well, I, I heard you talk about the federal government has no jurisdiction or shouldn't have any account. I don't think government should get in a woman's womb. I really don't think so. And in the resolution, where's the obli, where's the, where's the man in this? The woman doesn't get pregnant by herself. And it puts a total economic thing on that woman, especially for her to have to raise a child, especially if they're teenage or underage. How do they make, provide a, a, a home for that child when they can't work? They can't afford childcare? They just can't afford it. I, I think it's punitive. I think that resolution is punitive against women. You can say what you want, and if you don't wanna do it, that's fine. But that's how I feel about it. It's punitive against women.
Go against the man. Get the man.
Exactly, you're right. Where's the, where's the man's obligation in this at all? You know, I think Mr., I mean, and correct me if I'm wrong, and some of you were here at that meeting. Didn't Mr. Mather say, if you get your jollies on Saturday night, that's what happens? You get pregnant? Well, where's the man? Where's, where's his, where's his deal in that? Take responsibility for what he caused. A woman doesn't get pregnant by herself.
Exactly.
So, but if you don't wanna, you don't wanna rescind it, that's fine.
I don't.
But I wanted to have my say.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, I make a motion to consider and hold public meeting to rescind resolution number 7-14-22/111-09 regarding Otero County as a sanctuary for life. Do I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, motion fails.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on now to the commission discussion.
Can I say?
Sure.
I'll make a motion to disregard the, rather, the discussion. We have an attorney waiting that we're paying him by the hour to sit here and wait for us. If we could just go straight into executive session and take care of that.
Okay, we can do that.
I, I just texted, texted him, Commissioners, and I think he's, he went to go grab coffee or something. So it might, we can get through our reports before he's here.
We got time to do it?
We have time.
Okay.
Now, we don't wanna keep him on the clock.
All right, I've been working this last month with, with the group on the UTVs, trying to get the use on the pavement roads. Also been going to Chaparral to the meetings down there. They've had quite a bit of concern on the, the speeding through towns, a lot of the items like that. Been also working on the US 54 state line intersection with Mr. Nichols, trying to get this taken care of. I also have a tentative date meeting with GB Oliver. He's bringing the new commander in from the base. He's bringing his whole staff in. I'm taking our staff out, we're gonna have it introduce ourselves. We're gonna try to get a working relationship going. And we'll also be talking about the La Luz Gate project. I've been talking with Sheriff Black on getting the road study in Chaparral on Angelina, if, if it needs to be done. Also been working with the BLM office on the drafting of the new regulations on the BLM lands. If you think the Forest Service is regulating and trying to shut the ranchers down, wait till you get the copies of this new BLM stuff. It's terrible. So, the other deal I just mentioned to Mr. Nichols is, next month I want to bring on to the agenda resolution approaching the game and fish department on a mandatory reduction of the elk herd, to start working on that part. So that's gonna be a very touchy subject with the, some of the residents around here, but it's also gonna be an economic impact if we don't do something on it. So that, that's where I'm at.
I don't have too much to report. I had, got a call from Larry Van Winkle about some illegal dumping out on Sun Valley Road. I did go out there and look, but the ground was kinda soft, and I didn't wanna go too far in with my, I didn't see any evidence of any dumping, so I will try to get together with Larry, and we'll go out there and, look, the guy's name is, I think it's Minex? And he, he has permits, I guess, but Larry was alluding to the fact that there may be some medical waste that he's dumping out there and, and burying out there. And it would go to groundwater for the, for the domestic wells. So I did address it.
Commissioner Boyd, can I make a recommendation? When you do go out there like that, if you can get hold of the code enforcement and take somebody from here to where everybody's seeing the exact same thing, they'll have the codes and stuff. If it's something they need to clean up, if it's something they need to notify the sheriff about, it saves a little time.
Okay.
You go out there, then you're gonna come here, and then you're gonna go back out there and take care of it all.
Right, right. I need some more information from Mr. Van Winkle as well. Thank you. Yeah, that's all I had.
Okay, since our last meeting, I went and watched him run the tapes through the voting machines to get those ready for the election, met with Walt Kaufman regarding some emergency services issues up on the mountain. RB and I met with Spelling, Spike and Kelly Goss, and I talked about going up and seeing that, that new fencing up there, which is ridiculous. We had a special meeting about the ATVs on the Otero County roads. I attended the Almagordo Realtors Meeting, and they had a teddy bear drive for the state police, and it was very well attended, and we collected a lot of teddy bears. These are for the officers to give to the little kids when they're in crisis situations. They keep them in the trunks of their cars. We had a crap-ton of teddy bears, there were none left in Almagordo when we got through with that.
That's nice.
Attended the Zoom meeting, RB was there, Sheriff, Sheriff Black with Chavez, Lincoln, and Eddy Counties discussing these Forest Service issues that we're having. Met with Julianne to discuss some funding for the courthouse. And we attended the groundbreaking yesterday for the, the PESAP remodel over there. So we're excited to get that up and going. And held a special meeting last, well, not a special meeting, but just held a meeting last night with Matt Clark. He's our emergency service director with Sheriff Black. Well, actually Sheriff Black wasn't there, and the Sheriff Jet was there. Pamela Heltner was there, and the fire chiefs from around my district to discuss ways the county can help them with their recruiting efforts, cuz they're getting so, you know, they're just really getting hammered with, with lack of recruiting, and retention is a big problem. And lastly, I rode in the Veterans Day Parade. It was, it was an awesome parade, had about 40 entries, and we had a really good turnout. I was thankful to, to see people come out and, and support our veterans that way. So, that's it for me. All right, so I think we're, to our county managers, report?
Real quick, I just wanted to let you know that last Thursday, we had the pre-bid meeting, pre-bid meeting meeting for the privatization of the jail. We did have companies show up to tour the facility. That closes on December 6th, so you will have something on your December agenda to consider.
Okay, good, thank you.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning Commissioners, update on 506. After last meeting, I sent the signed agreement, the MOU, to Fort Bliss for the commander's signature. I need follow-up on that. I haven't received a copy from them yet, but it should be signed, should be through the processes. But I haven't heard back. As far as the claim side of it, Tom and I came up with an idea on how we can compare damage done by the military vehicles to routine repair. What we're going to do is give them reports for another section of 506 that we maintain and how much we spent on that compared to how much we've spent doing repairs in the section where the military training occurs. With that being said, I think the claim will probably, if it goes through on that, we will receive an amount that is closer to what we've spent in repairs than what we submitted as quotes to fix the whole road. We're probably going to get, it's probably going to be significantly lower. I don't know yet how much we've spent, but the cost to repair the entire section is estimated between 1.5 and $2 million. I don't think we've spent that in the repairs. So, it's managing expectations. We're probably going to get closer to just what we've spent as far as how the claims process works. Now that we have the resolution signed on the off-road vehicles, or you'll sign it after this meeting, I've got the letter ready to go, Sheriff Black's letter of support. So, we'll get that out either today or on Monday and get that process started. And code enforcement. Commissioner DuBois, I've spoken with Larry about that. Minix construction is a frequent flyer of dumping construction debris, not just in this county, but all across the state.
In several, yeah.
Yeah. It's, my predecessor successfully took him to magistrate court and got fines levied against him, but obviously that wasn't enough to convince him to do like the rest of us do and go to the convenience center. I think there's a construction, an actual construction dump site that is for that, that the industry uses. And I think there's a cost associated with that and he's wanting to avoid that to maximize profits. But we have that on the docket for me to process for code enforcement as well as various properties that Commissioner Mather at least brought up. I was hoping to have an assistant help me with getting those processed and ready for magistrate court, but on that front, I'm not having much success with getting applicants. So, if anyone's aware of anyone that wants to come work for me, that would be, that'd be swell. But code enforcement, it's got to be a priority. These issues are lingering and I work with the sheriff's department to figure out whether, which, which is the best avenue for, for getting these, to where there's some consequences for individuals. So, hopefully I'll have something to report for you next meeting on that. More progress than I've had so far. But that's all I have right now. I suggest we recess for a few minutes. I have not heard back from Mister Eskivell. Previously, I thought this was going to take longer, so he was anticipating coming back around noon. But as soon as we recess, I'll give him a call and see. Oh, he's here.
There he is.
Well, that's all I have.
All right. I make a motion to hold an executive session under NMSA 1978 ten dash fifteen dash one. I need to get a second.
You have a roll call?
Oh, you have a roll call before they leave? Okay.
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Yes.
Who's your markman? Here.
Here.
Okay.